I'm here this morning. I'm hanging in there.
Up here.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna join.
I have a cold.
Definitely not as good as Maria.
So, I don't know. I'll save everyone the...
But better than Mike.
Doesn't take much.
Yeah. I told Dale you'd be here three minutes after.
I did. I figured I'd be trailing way behind.
It always happens at the worst time. There's really not a good time to be without water. I can even have a pond, I can go have a bath.
That's true.
I'll pie.
Take you a bar of soap.
I still have a pond right to my house, but I don't have any way to get water in it anyway.
So are those, are those...
Well, no.
No, those areas closer to town right off. Are they the old lagoons?
Yeah.
And then the other ones are down by the little salt lake now, kinda north of that power plant.
Yeah, but the old ones, they were built when I was twelve years old and there's six of them, they never used two of them. It's so porous, so much gravel in that area. All the parents of them were built on a big gravel pit. And, yeah, two of them were never used.
Just too porous, huh?
They went on for years, years of fun, he says, "Yeah, well, you can't keep..." Have the closest well to it.
Every night I trace it.
Test it when I was sixteen, the guy, Mike's grandfather, I was, we drank it all the time, everything. So, I think the trip through the, through the gravel and everything cleans it up. Yeah, it's solid, stay on top.
You're dead.
They find, but those dudes down there, you know, they've had something, and they...
Added expense, by the way.
They don't see, they don't see.
They have to evaporate it.
Well, and then when it gets full, they actually chlorinate it and discharge it into the little salt lake. It goes through all the ponds and so it settles, settles, settles. And the last, the final discharge is chlorinated and go to the little salt lake, so.
Mike gets rolling, Commissioner Wood's rolling whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm a click away.
You're, no, no problem.
I'm in. All right, good morning, everybody. Today, Monday, the tenth day of September, two thousand eighteen, we are convened as Iron County Commission. So I actually asked a couple of folks if they would do the pledge and the prayer this morning, and I see neither of them, and, uh... And I, neither one of them answered my call on my way over. So, uh... Bruce, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning? Appreciate that. Mike, would you be so kind to lead us in a invocation?
Sure.
Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, and heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity. County Commission meeting, we thank thee for this great country in which we live, the freedoms that we have. Thank thee for this former government that allows us to elect representatives who can, on our behalf, pray thou, bless those that are making decisions today, that they will do so in, you know, this in the best interest of the citizens of Iron County. This county will continue to be a great place to live, and that the people here will be blessed to be prosperous and successful.
Amen. Thank you. Uh, I've got a copy of the minutes from...
Who to approve, written?
They're both June twenty-fifth and August twenty-seventh. Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. All right, on to departmental reports. Maria, glad to have you here this morning.
Good morning.
Bright and sunny morning.
Bright and sunny.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so, uh, we are at about sixty-five percent of our TRT budget to date, and forty-five percent of our restaurant tax, um, budget. Uh, as you can see, um, I've attached reports regarding where we are in terms of our TRT collections and our restaurant collections, and so restaurant is up eight point five percent, and TRT is up six percent. We're still experiencing some declines in occupancy in Cedar City, and that's in the attached report. Uh, right now, we're about four percent down, and so, um, there's definitely some factors involved in why we think we're down, uh, at least in terms of the occupancy. Uh, one is definitely, um, Airbnb or short-term properties, just because they don't report to, the same reports as our hotels do. Um, there's also, um, we also added another hotel this year, added a hundred rooms, so that's definitely having an effect. Um, we are definitely getting some reports from the national parks saying that they're either kinda flat or, um, actually down. So we're kinda seeing that there is a trend out there, um, and so we're gonna monitor that. Um, but we kinda have a feeling that we're gonna have to not rely so much on national parks and rely more on ourselves, so, moving forward. Uh, and a lot of that is, too, is because, like, Washington County has built ten new properties just in the last year and a half, and so that's definitely, you know, having an impact in terms of the overflow.
Are other counties experiencing the decline generally across the state?
Yeah, and talking to my cohorts across the state, they are noticing that there are slight declines, nothing, nothing major, but things are kinda on a flat or, you know, a small decline down, so some of it is, you know, the, you know, there's just many factors. There's been some not-so-great press about national parks being, you know, full, um, going to a reservation system. The dollar, yeah, has more, you know, is very strong, so, um, you know, the international visitation is down because it's...
Do you think colob closing had any effect on us?
It doesn't help, for sure.
Didn't help.
Didn't help, um, yeah, it had an, I think it's had an effect on us in, in terms of keeping people here longer. I don't think people come to Iron County because of colob canyons, but when we're trying to keep people in the area and keep them occupied, then that definitely helps.
So, when you say occupancy's down, that's the rate, right?
No, that's, well, that's the amount of people who are staying in a hotel, percentage-wise.
Okay, but, so, but the TRT was up?
The TRT is up.
So how do you equate that?
I think a lot of it is, um, is that there are hotel, that, some of it's definitely Airbnb or short-term property, um...
So are they, because if the money's up and the, how does, how can the money be up if the...
They don't report occupancy, that's why. So, really, the only ones that report occupancy are our hotels, chains, so...
So, and I think this is a conundrum that eventually Iron County's gonna have to face in terms of policy. We took a stab at it in fifteen, but...
I think we're gonna have to look at it again. Um, so we met with a company called STR Helper, which is out of, um, it's out of Cash Valley, and, um, we met with them a couple of weeks ago. We actually brought in Bryanhead and Cedar City to meet with them, and they identified nine hundred and twenty-five short-term rentals in Iron County, which for us was kind of an eye-opener because, um, I, I knew we had many, but I didn't think we had that many, so...
More do you think are unreported?
Uh, well, I mean, they can, they can run under the radar for quite a while, so, um, having that soft, you know, the software is definitely something that we could, I think we need to look at because we wanna know who they are, we wanna match them up with the STR number, because that's really about the only way we know they're there, at least on the reporting, um, because it's not based on property, it's based on business. So, if we can't match them up to the business, then it's difficult to know who they are and where they're at. So, there's definitely some benefits to being able to track who they are, um, at least if they're promoting on everything other than Airbnb, because Airbnb collects the tax on their behalf, but submits it under one name, which is Airbnb, so we don't know who they are. We don't know who they collected it from, so, so that's challenging. So it would be, I think it would be good for us as a county to at least know who, who they are, match them to an STR number, and maybe if we feel like maybe they're not collecting tax or they're not being compliant, we can, you know, go the appropriate routes, so... And I know the Assessor's Office was interested in it because it does, it changes property value, their assessment.
Isn't there any real way that we ever really climb down on a hundred percent of those, ever, ever?
No, but I think just having an awareness and making sure that they're compliant is really the goal, because we, we definitely wanna have people on a level playing field, um, because we have hotels and bed and breakfasts who play fair and do right, and, and we would like our short-term rentals to do the same. I, I, you know, we wanna embrace that business, it's a new business, not a new business, but it's definitely something that's taking off, and it's allowing people to, you know, be entrepreneurs and, and make income, and we, we wanna welcome that, but we also wanna make sure they're compliant with the rules and, and the laws that are already there, so I think there's some benefit from having that. And we'll, we'll bring that software, um, up with our tourism advisory board when we meet again in October. How much does it cost, or... Well, they haven't given us a bid, they haven't given us a proposal yet, but, uh, we're looking at like twenty-five thousand dollars. It was a rough estimate, but I don't believe that we're gonna pay for all of that. I, I think that we would, um, have a partnership with our municipalities who are collecting taxes as well, you know, like Bryanhead and Cedar City, they collect a municipal TRT tax.
I wouldn't take long to recoup twenty-five thousand.
I don't think so. So, and we have a person in our office that we can move into a position where she could monitor this, you know, on a daily basis, uh, and then take the appropriate steps, so it wouldn't be, you know, adding too much into our, into our day because we have somebody who's kinda sitting, she's sitting at our front desk, and I think we can just add that into her, into her workload.
We can talk about Canera sometime later in your...
Yes. So, we'll talk about it now if you'd like, so, so we've moved Canera Falls on to letting them manage their, their sys, their permit system on their own. Uh, they've already made a change in the fee, so they've taken it from eight dollars to nine dollars. They, uh, they claim that's just to help with the, make a, make it easier on that transaction fee that was being assessed when we were, when we had it under our system. So, um, and talking to the BLM, they say the user counts are about the same as last year, so I anticipate that Canaravel will probably implement some sort of limitation per day, uh, in the next year. So, we still had, we still had some money that was being collected through the old system that needs to be turned over to them, um, and Dan can take care of that, but pretty much everything else has just been moved over to them and their management.
So, well, I guess even if the visitation doesn't go down, at least they have the funds to take care of the situation, and they have the toilet, and, you know, so, I don't know, they'll have to make that decision, but I did have one, uh, guy that was pretty hot, it was an email complaint, and, I mean, he was nice, but he was, you know, "Why is this happening, you know, we've been gone all our lives?" But I explained, and, and he was fine, didn't go back and forth, just, with just the one, so I think people are starting to get used to it.
I think they are, um...
Big shortfall down there is the sheriff's expense on removing all the people who can't get out on their own.
Yeah, they...
You had another one over the weekend, didn't you?
Yeah, they had one this weekend, so...
How do we build a compensation in for, for those rescues?
We didn't, so that's something as we're moving forward, 'cause we're still meeting together as a group, um, not as often as we were when we started the system, but I think that's something that needs to be a recommendation from the county, that there is some sort of compensation towards the rescue. I know that they gave a thousand dollars to search and rescue, um, out of that fund, um...
Not take care of one rescue?
I don't, it doesn't take care of anything, does it? Pays the gas.
Definitely need to do that, because, I mean, it's not like some area that, you know, you're gonna go once in five years, it happens twice a month or whatever, so there really needs to be something done there.
I think we were in a rush just to get the system up and running before the summer, and I don't think we fully addressed all the, all the things that needed to be addressed, but I think once we bring back everyone, and I talked with Mike about it, they, Mike Worden not too long ago, that's definitely something we need to bring up and make sure is in place, so... They are, you know, they are making quite a bit of money through what's happening down there, so... Um, just so you know, the fair is really interested in our signs that are on the, on our building, the electronic signs, and those, um, those signs are, are really out of date, so the software is very difficult, it doesn't talk to the system very well. And so we've been actually looking at replacing them anyways, so with a better system, um, and I think giving them to the fair would actually be a good thing because it's limited use, um, you know, it'd be just a couple of weekends out of the year, so, um, so we're gonna look at that, but the cost to replace them is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars because it's both sides of our sign, but, um...
Need to work to a color sign?
To a color sign, so...
Will the screen be larger then also?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think that, I don't know that that structure can handle it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're gonna look at it, and they may be lighter now, 'cause when we, we, I bought those signs one year or two early, so if I had waited a year, they would have been, we would have had full color and all that, um...
Nobody has a crystal ball.
We don't have a crystal ball, so I just, I think it, I think it's a good match, I think we're willing to do that, and we'll figure out how to pay for the replacements in, in the budget year, in the twenty nineteen. Uh, I did get my, I was awarded a grant from the state of Utah, uh, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand plus for a winter co-op, and forty-eight thousand for a summer, um, all together with our matches from our community partners like Bryanhead. It would total over four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars in advertising money. Uh, we're gonna put our web, website and our ad agency out for bid, uh, this coming year, uh, in the fall. We're, we're not happy with our company. Um, they actually ended up taking our, we had some issues with our website, it went down over the July fourth weekend, basically didn't do us any good, so, uh, so we'll be putting that out for bid, and the new visitor guide is completed, so I'll give you a copy of that. So, and then, uh, finally, with, I will, I'll bring this up with my tourism advisory board, but I did wanna bring it up with you as well, um, I'd really like to do a feasibility study regarding our conference and event space needs for the future. Uh, here in Iron County, we're seeing that both the Hunter Conference Center and Festival Hall, they, they seem to be, um, they seem to be close to capacity, or they're, you know, they're being used a lot, um, and we still, um, can't accommodate a group of a thousand, of a thousand people. So, I would like to see if we, if that's a need, or if it can be something for us to plan for in the future. And I think that's it on tourism, any questions?
Comment, I think that is something we need to look at, I think people love, you know, St. George is wonderful, a lot of people go there, but, uh, a lot of people like to have a little cooler place. And I, and we're growing like crazy, so I think it is something we really need to give a lot of thought to.
I appreciate that.
Where do you get these printed, real?
Uh, so we have a partnership with, um, with the company that does the Shakespeare Festival program, so they print them for us, I'm not sure...
That's well done. Flossy?
Flossy.
It's not cheap, is it?
It's not cheap, but we, um, it's subsidized by advertising, so we have, that company goes out and sells advertising for us so that we don't have to pay the full printing costs, so we still have to pay, but not as much as if we were to do it on our own.
I had a couple of thoughts on this, over the, uh, fair weekend, there's a, there's a display over in the fair building that has, um, this kinda stuff that's about eight years old.
There is?
Yeah, and so it would be great to update that, I don't know how many people, you know, go through there, but... And then at one point, we talked about trying to have a display where the old phone booth used to be in our lobby here in the courthouse. I don't know if...
Yeah.
I can help facilitate that, or...
We'll need to, I, I'll have to put that in next year's budget, but that is the plan.
Oh, okay.
And I think what we can do is maybe replicate what we've done here in the courthouse, maybe...
Okay.
And take that over to the fair, since it's already kinda designed and, and written, some of the, you know, maybe the scenic aspects, um... So I think that would be fun, and I think we can do it. I'll go, I'll try and go over there and look at it, and it's in, on the north side of the fair, but where is it?
Yes, uh-huh, on the north side by the entrance there. And I, and I'd like to say too, I, I just express appreciation again for what you did for this building. I get comments, not every day, but certainly every week, on, on, on the banners on the walls and the informative panels. It's, it's great, and it really has added to the remodel of the courthouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had fun doing it. Okay, uh, outdoor recreation, we're at fifty-two percent of our budget spent, um, again, I'll be, I, I mentioned this the last time, but I really wanna make sure that we keep this moving forward as we're doing our budget process, but I really do need to replace the toilets up at Woods Ranch, um, so I think we'll have to do this in a phase, like, one toilet one year, a toilet, and then the other one another year. Um, I think we could probably get some money out of the restaurant tax to help pay for that, I don't know that they'll give all of it, but I certainly think we can, we can ask that board, um, to help, um... Speaking of restaurant tax, they gave us a grant as well for the shooting range and for some replacement tables. Uh, the tables have arrived, they're great, they're perfect, um, and we're starting on the shooting range targets. We're actually having members of our shooting range committee construct those for us, so that's been good. So far, we're, we have a hundred and six pavilion reservations and six, over six thousand, six hundred dollars in income from those reservations. That is slightly up from last year when we had sixty-one hundred. Um, the, we're definitely getting a lot of use, um, a lot of weddings particularly, um, and I'm really grateful we have a great maintenance person, he is just keeping those parks look really beautiful and really taking good care of them. Um, the monsoon rain has created a lot of problems in terms of Three Peaks in the shooting range. We've had floodwaters at least on two occasions, um, they've taken out the fence at the shooting range, which has allowed the range cows to get in there, so we've been moving cows out of the shooting range and trying to keep up with the fence. And, um, and then the culvert that we put in earlier this year for Three Peaks, um, washed away. We actually went back in and put in several inches of rock, um, base, and, well, several feet, actually, and it washed away completely on the second flood. So, right now, we're at a point where we're gonna have to do a cement basin, um, which is gonna be expensive, but we're bidding, we're bidding that out round, right now, to see what, um, see if we can do it within this budget year, but it is an issue, we're gonna have to maybe think about, um, doing some roadwork through Three Peaks that's a little more permanent, like compacting and, um, and doing some, I don't know, I don't know that we wanna do a solid surface, but I don't, I don't know, it's just, it is an issue, so something we're gonna probably have to discuss with Preston, but I just wanna say thank you to Preston, he has just, um, been over backwards to help us during these times. He is a great guy, um, he just helps out so much, and so we're very grateful to him.
I'll have, uh, him and Steve look at the area above there, the watershed, 'cause maybe there's something we could do in the way of retention, small retention basin or something.
That's what I'm wondering, 'cause it's...
Everything's expensive.
Everything's expensive, but it's an ongoing issue, and, um, I mean, I've had the parks since two thousand thirteen, and every year we have an issue with the road and with the floodwater, so this year more than probably we've ever had, but...
Yeah.
It is an issue. Um, just moving forward, so we had to install new lights at Woods Ranch, those are the over, the big overhead lights. Um, they tend to, people like to shoot them out, um, we're hoping that the new lights we've, um, we've selected will kinda deter that. And then we moved the storage container up there finally, um, which has been really good because we can store our lawnmower and our tools, uh, but we will have to, you know, put some things on it to deter people from trying to break in, so, it's just an issue. Uh, our water quality survey is going to take place on September twenty-sixth, but so far the water systems are doing well, and, um, haven't had any problems so far this year, and, and then as far as Three Peaks and the patent process, um, the, it just requires the development plan, the development plan I will finish up this week. I'm gonna have Mike Worden review it and get it back to me, and then, um, but we'll have it in time for your coordinating meeting with the BLM. So, we should have that moving forward, um, pretty quickly. Other than that, do you have any questions?
What about the restroom up to Woods Ranch?
I need it, I need one. So... It need, I, the one by the small pavilion really needs, that's my priority, uh, so in the budget process, however we can figure it out, I would really like, you know, and if I need to go after grants, I'll go after grants, but it really does need to be replaced.
So maybe if Canera's bringing all their money, maybe they reimburse tourism for that restroom and we shift those monies up to Woods Ranch.
We could try that, I'd much rather see it go towards the search and rescue, you know, and what they're doing, but, um... You know, we did give them that bathroom, and it would be nice to re, maybe recoup a little bit of money from that, but...
Water system at Woods, working out?
Yeah, it's perfect, it's, it's works really well. So we've had, um, some erosion, which is typical for Woods Ranch, everything erodes there. Everything erodes there, um, and so we've had some pipes, um, exposed, but it's on a flex, it's a flex line, so we just go back and just cover it back up and it seems to work.
How much was the restroom at Canera? Thirty?
It was, uh, twenty, twenty-four thousand, but it's a single vault, so it's only one, one seat. And at Woods Ranch, because of the use, we would need, we would need a two-seat. So that basically doubles the price. But I would like to, they tend to go up in price before the first of the year, so, but we can lock in and, in last year's price. So I wanted to call them and see if we could lock that price in and then install in the spring at Woods Ranch.
Is there some resale value in that old one?
Um, the structure, I actually think we could maybe move the structure part and make, you know, sell that. We'll have to just, um, coat over the vault. You know, I, well, I actually need to know what we need to do in terms of the vault. Well, I don't know if we can coat over it or if we have to actually pull it out. Um, and we'll, we'll have some make-up look at it, but.
Is that an issue with public health?
Uh, well, to the point that I can't get anybody to go in and clean it because they don't wanna touch it.
I mean, approval.
It could be. So, so we'll need to, we'll need, it's not anywhere near the water system. It's not where, you know, it's not in.
It's contained.
It's all contained in its own little box. So I think we'll just have the cost of probably removing it and covering it. But I'm gonna, I'll check into seeing if it can be just. You know, because it is in a contain, in a container, if it can just stay there. Um, because they don't leach out, they don't leak out, but.
And we move to a new site?
Um, I wouldn't. I would maybe, I would take the, the structure above and just move, and just sell that or move it to a different site. But I wouldn't try to reuse the system, so.
Would not try to reuse the, so we'd, we'd move to a new holding tank site?
Yeah, it would, I would not have, I would not use that site again. I would move it out maybe towards the field. Um, just for the, the fact that we wanna make it easy to, for people to get in the, you know, cause we have to, you know, clean out the stuff, so we wanna make it easy for a truck to get in there, so. Anything else?
No, thank you very much. Move on to the sheriff's department. We'll move on to the cor, we'll move on to the corrections department.
I'm just gonna give him a break so he can get ready for his. So anyways, happy Monday to everybody.
That's a cheery thought, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's a good start to any week.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you.
So it looks like as of today, we're at sixty-three percent of our budget. Um, we were able to return eighteen sixty-six back to the county from the maintenance scrap metal, which I thought was a pretty good amount from all those odds and ends left.
Boiler?
Um, from the air handlers, so.
Did you only sell the boilers? Do you want?
Oh, I'm not sure. That was a while back, do you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's included in that or not.
This is just all the stuff they threw down from the roof and took it and.
A lot of concrete.
Mm-hmm. So, a little bonus, I guess. Um, we haven't had any unexpected expenses. As of today, our culinary meal cost is ninety-two cents, which is really good. Um, this shows all of our bookings and the different departments that have brought them in. Um, as of today, the, we have ten state inmates, eighteen federal. We're not holding any for any other county and a total of a hundred and seventy.
How many of those are female?
I did not check the female this morning.
About?
So.
Thirty?
We're probably around, probably around thirty would be a good guess.
And did we award the bid yet on the?
The bid's still open.
Till, when?
I think the twenty-sixth. Does that sound right?
Mike said they have had, uh, he has had one come back.
Who's gonna have a bid then on me?
Excuse me?
Gonna have a bid at least, one bid at least.
Yes, it's open, yep. I would hope so, yeah. So, hasn't closed out yet.
Maybe add female on here.
I will.
But that's, that's a good addition.
I try and look, but yeah.
That's a good addition, what you.
He's got the average there. Thirty-three.
Oh yeah, thirty-three, there's an average that would be over the last, like, total for the quarter.
Why did, what's the difference in the first quarter being way high, second, third quarter relatively flat on booking? Six-thirty then down to?
I'm not sure.
That seemed like quite a difference.
Mm-hmm.
Last two are flat.
I am not sure. Even our population, I mean, the overall has gone down just a little bit, so. Maybe people making better choices. Just a guess, I don't know. I'll find out though, I will find out. What's that?
People are going crazy in the winter.
Right after the holidays, you know, right on the, yeah, so. Um, vacancies, as of today, we have three remaining vacancies. We just barely lost two more this last, um, month.
Advertise?
We have a roster right now that's open. For, but we have, we're in the middle of doing a hiring process, which we have, on the back page, it tells you about that. We have two in the middle of the background investigation part, one scheduled for an evaluation for the psych. And we just sent out another conditional offer, which would be our three if all goes well. That takes a little bit to go through. At that point, we would be done with this current roster and wait for the, the next roster that closes October first. So we have three right now in the academy. Robert Stammett, that was approved last commission, just started this morning. So, um, Clayton Smith, Robert Stammett, and then we actually have Tanner Edwards going through right now too. He's part of our medical department to get corrections certified in that first year, so. Um, Carrie Turrell was a corporal, so we've replaced her with Anna Teeples, that has been acting as our interim corporal. And then, uh, Pierce Robertson is gonna be the interim corporal until the return of Hanson from the military. Work crew, we started back up for the county fair. Looks like he, a total of five hundred and sixty-one hours, which is quite a bit, that he's put towards that fair. Um, we'll have, once the fair's done, we'll have to pull him back off, losing these last two. Um, I'm hoping by about November, we should be back on track, getting the ones that are on FTO, new hires coming back. Kind of a six-month process, once you hire him, to get him through the academy, to come back and do FTO before they're actually.
That makes a lot of money.
Counted for a number.
Have that inmate.
Yeah. It did accrue quite a bit of overtime, but that's, it was nice to, I didn't, I wanted to make sure they were able to get that accomplished for sure. So we'll definitely get it back as quick as we can.
Joyce expressed her gratitude about that.
Good.
Multiple times.
Oh, good. She's a nice lady. Um, jail remand, oh, we just talked about that. Um, the maintenance have been helping with the dispatch area, remodeling that. I'm not sure where they're at on that, if that's.
Uh, it's.
It's just been part of.
Yeah, it is, they're, uh, almost done.
Yeah, um.
What's the extent of what they're doing there?
Just, uh, we had, we took out a wall, uh, just repainting, patched the carpet, nothing made. Just kinda dressing it up a little bit.
Um, let's see, we talked about the hires and the correction roster that's open till October ten, or first, excuse me. Um, work crew, talked about that. In that last page, well, there's the breakdown of the cost of the meals from the culinary. Then also the revenue, the jail revenue that we bring in, kinda breaks that down so you can see where that money comes from.
On your revenue, Johnny, you got jail reimbursement, zero is, that's not JRI, is it?
I'm not sure which one that covers, and I don't know, the jail reimbursement. I don't know why that would be zero. I'll have to check, that may just been left off.
Is CLP in here?
I don't know.
Cause that's jumped way up, their CLP refund.
It's not JRI.
It's not.
I'll have to check on that, make sure it wasn't.
It's on this last.
On this page?
H. That's a lot of revenue that'll bring in.
The JRI?
That's no.
Oh, the.
What you're showing is revenue, that's.
Yep. It's not just a black hole, but.
It's gonna be short of what it costs, but.
Doing our best.
That's pretty sizable.
Yep. I agree. Bless you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me or? Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Hey. Here's my report.
Thank you.
I've got a lot to cover, so we're gonna breeze through some of the.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, uh, again, thanks for having me over to give our report, kinda give you an idea of where we're at. Uh, budget status, uh, I don't have a percentage where we're at, but I, I believe where you are, uh, I'm confident we are operating within our budgeted amount. Uh. And then issues with major equipment. Uh, yes, I, our trucks were delivered, our new patrol trucks, but they were the wrong color. Uh, for some reason, the dealership, uh, uh, checked the wrong box and they got sent black. And we get the Oxford white trucks, so I'm not taking delivery on those. Uh, they've, uh, they've indicated that they'll take full responsibility for it and keep the trucks and try to farm them out to another agency that's running black trucks. So right now we're exploring other options to get our patrol trucks, so.
They build out too?
What's that?
These new ones already built out?
Yeah, they were the police package. Um, so, uh, and I didn't, we didn't catch this color snafu until they sent the paperwork down and, uh, I was filling out the paperwork to send them back to get the, uh, certificate of origin for each vehicle. And I noticed, well, actually Lieutenant Slosser picked it up, that, well, why they, why they black? And I'm like, oh my gosh. So, but they, they, uh, the dealership took full responsibility, that was their mistake, not mine. So, uh, I don't foresee that costing a, any extra money to work through this problem, but it's frustrating to say the least. Uh, workloads and caseloads, uh, our detectives continue to, uh, work very hard on, uh, several felony cases. Uh, they're packing about twelve caseloads, open caseloads per detective. Uh, so far we have pulled, uh, this year twenty-five, uh, it's over this, this morning, but actually, uh, over twenty-five hundred and forty case numbers, uh, to date. And, uh, that's about where we were last year, slightly ahead. Okay, now on the staffing levels, uh, you're gonna have to bear with me on this one because, uh, there's been a lot of change. Uh, staffing levels, Deputy Powell and Deputy Hilger have successfully completed their field training and are now working on their own. Uh, Deputy Almont graduated post-academy May thirty-first and he's in the middle of his fourteen-week field training program. Deputy Massimo Noe and Deputy Zach Wood are currently at post-academy and they are set to graduate towards the middle of October. Uh, we have conditional job offers extended to two more applicants. And if they pass ground, background investigations, we will be a full staff in the patrol division. Uh, Corporal Dan Raditz recently resigned from the Iron County Sheriff's Office to take a position with the Hurricane Police Department.
The sheriff while you're there, did that result in an increase in pay for him?
What's that?
That resulted in an increase of pay for him to go to Hurricane?
It did. Uh, about two dollars more an hour when he went there. Uh. And as a result of this, uh, supervisory vacancy in the patrol, Corporal Nate Houchen transferred out of investigations and, uh, the investigations division to take the open ro, open supervisory role in patrol. And currently we're testing internally to fill this op, open corporal position in the investigations division. As of right now, the Iron County Sheriff's Office has three deputies deployed on four-hundred-day missions and that includes, uh, the deputy out of corrections. Uh, again, we proudly support our, our military men and women that, uh, go off to serve and we wish them a safe return. And let's see, Deputy Nick Gibson is retiring October first with twenty-plus years of dedicated service in law enforcement. Uh, he will be missed, uh, he, a big hole to fill there when he leaves. And Deputy Larry Orton, who, uh, recently retired after forty-five years total on law enforcement, eleven of those with the Iron County Sheriff's Office as a bailiff. Uh, previous to coming to us, he was a, uh, retired from the UHP, Utah Patrol. So, and he will be missed also. His work ethic is incredible. Any questions before I continue on? Let's see. And again, as of, uh, as of this date, uh, crime statistics, uh, again, we're, we see unfortunately a lot of sex offenses, property crimes, uh, online fraud and, uh, online fraud, fraud is, is getting to be pretty. Uh, we get reports on that daily where people become victim or attempted to be, somebody attempts to make them a victim of online fraud through, uh, uh, whether it's a phone scam or something, uh, they, they get tied into, uh, online and, and some people lose a lot of money. Uh, and those cases are very difficult to work, cause sometimes our suspects live overseas. So they are tough to work. And again, we see, uh, uh, we still see our share of, uh, drug overdoses, uh, people that are, uh, addiction issues that, uh, we're trying to work through with them.
Is there any trend on that with all the lawsuits and everything and the more public awareness? Is, is there any trend downward?
Uh, no trend downward that I can see at this point. Of course, we're just starting into that, so, you know, maybe in a couple of quarters, we'll start to see, uh, that, that trend. Uh, hopefully, uh, a downward trend for sure. Uh, the task force, our narcotics task force segwaying right into that, uh, they are working very hard. And year-to-date, uh, they've filed sep, uh, over two-hundred-and-fifty felony cases separately. Separate, two-hundred-and-fifty felony charges. Uh, some individuals, uh, that doesn't mean there's two-hundred-and-fifty people that have been charged. That just means, uh, some people get several felony charges against them for one incident. But anyway, two-hundred-and-fifty felony charges is pretty significant. And that's all related to the illegal distribution of drugs in our area, Bieber, Iron and Garfield Counties. Uh, VIPs, again, uh, I won't read through that verbatim, but, uh, we couldn't do it without them. They do a good job for us, uh, I'd say an excellent job. Um, they have been so instrumental in helping us through the fair this year, uh, through all of the biking events and races that come into the county, uh, every summer. They, uh, provide traffic control, uh, crowd control. Uh, again, they are priceless, uh, the, what they return to Iron County every year with their, their dedication and service. Search and rescue, again, they've had a busy year with the, uh, uh, majority of their deployments being in the Canara Falls. Um, uh, prior, on Friday, when I made out this report, we'd had ten calls so far, you know, down to Canara Falls and over the weekend, so that bumped it to eleven. And every one of these incidents have been, uh, uh, broken leg, fractured, uh, lower leg injuries. And there's this one area up in there that seems to cause, uh, most of them occur right in this one little area and it's above the first fall. Uh, there's an area where, uh, you can, where the creek comes down, where it kinda creates a slick rock and people decide that they wanna slide down those rocks and into a little pond at the end. Well, it's great for kids, uh, kids can slide down that and, and they're pretty resilient and they bend instead of break. And, uh, they're fine, but when an adult gets on there, uh, they pick up a lot of speed. And, uh, when they get to the bottom, the pond is not as deep as they think and then the leg breaks. Or they get, uh, a sprain, a severe sprain where they can't walk. And at that point, uh, we, uh, it, it becomes pretty, pretty intense at that point to get those individuals out of there cause they can't walk. And so, uh, from, we can figure on average, from the time we are, uh, called out to the time we wrap up and stow our gear and leave, it's six hours minimum.
How many people?
At least twenty, to bring that many out, to bring that person out.
How many?
Twenty. Twenty people.
So how do we recoup those costs, Sheriff?
Well, some of those, of course, are volunteers. Well, some of those, of course, are volunteers with the search and rescue. And others are, of course, paid members of the sheriff's office and ropes team. I guess we need to explore that as far as recouping those costs, because this rescue over the weekend, we were shorthanded, we didn't have the bodies needed to get them out of there. And so, we ended up calling the state helicopter, the DPS helicopter to come down with their hoist capability to lift them right from close to the area where they become injured. But in doing so, we have to have our ropes team move the patient up about a ninety to a hundred-foot cliff, we have to ascent the patient up to a level that's not deep down into the canyon, so the helicopter can have enough cable to come in and get over the top of the patient and be able to sling them up, hoist them up to the helicopter. So, that was pretty intense. Pardon me?
Is there a fee?
No, DPS covers that, but ultimately, that comes out of your state taxes, you know, to have that helicopter, that service available. So, I mean, these rescues are, they get very intense, very, and when we have to will them out, which we, if we have enough people, then that's intense all on its own, because we have two areas where we have to rope them out of there, we have to set up a rope, a rope system to lower them over the falls and down in and, and it, that's where the manpower issue comes in, just to get them out of there, you know, to be able to switch off the basket, because people get tired as they're bringing them out. And it, again, it's, it's a big deal, once we have to go in there and get somebody.
Should we not impose, or have Canaraville impose a added fee per person for?
I would say that that needs to be looked at and for sure, probably adopted, because it gets expensive, I mean, I'm sure we could come up with a report compiling all the man-hours and probably put some hard numbers of how much it's cost this year. And again, I do want to speak for Canaraville, they have stepped up and they gave us a thousand dollars a while back. And then, they've also indicated that they would, any equipment that we need to buy to support rescues in their canyon, that they would also reimburse for that as well. So, they are willing to step up and help with equipment, which is very appreciated.
What are the numbers, Marie, do you have the numbers for, example, for July?
As far as how many people?
Yeah.
I don't write off the top of my head, but I.
Guess.
Well, at least.
You know, yesterday, when we were going in there, I mean, on Saturday, I could not believe the crowds in there, it was unreal.
So, one two bucks a head cover rescue, Sheriff?
Easily, it would do well, that would, that would be a very good reimbursement.
Sheriff, what about prevention? I realize it's Canaraville's baby, but you know, you have the old analogy, but should we, should we put ambulances down in the valley or put a fence on the cliff? Seems like there ought to be something we could do.
Just fence the entrance, period.
Well, yeah, that'd take care of it.
Rescue.
But if, you know, if the majorities are happening all in one place, can there be signage, can there be?
Well, that's, we've talked about that as far as maybe even chaining that area where they're sliding off that slide. And I have talked to one city councilman down there, that this is something that needs to be addressed, because we're seeing all of our injuries in one area. We do see, we have seen some over the years below the falls and also above just simply rolled ankles and things, but some of those, we're able to get them out of there, they're able to put, you know, some weight and, you know, it's a long trip out, but they can kind of, they're ambulatory, they can come out on their own.
Where is this part where people are getting hurt, the broken legs, is that in B L M or is that Sittler?
No, I'm not sure.
Because that's gonna make it, that's gonna.
It's quite, it's deep into the canyon, I can tell you that, it's deep, it's.
Because it's on, it's in the area of the falls, right?
It's above the falls.
So, and Sittler's got the top ground.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, Canaraville's count is, they're averaging three-hundred people a day, three-hundred hikers a day.
Six days, seven days.
Seven days.
Yeah, I know they're doing really well and, and that's, that's great.
Great.
But, you know, with that comes an infrastructure, you have to build underneath it.
Pick up the balance.
I really think we should stress prevention there, I mean, you know, if you can prevent that situation there and cut it down to four or five a year, then we're, you know, the expense goes way down. And I realize when you put up fences or chains and stuff, it maybe detracts a little bit, but.
Well, and that's, it's just dangerous, I mean, within twenty-four hours, no, forty-eight hours, we had two, two females that become, broke legs on that very slide and they were, and honestly, they were sitting in the same spot. You know, and we went in, they were sitting in the same spot to prepare them to get them out of there. And I was just like, this is, this is kind of crazy, and so.
You know, in Hawaii, there's this place called Hanakapiya Falls and there's a really bad riptide, they're like, don't swim in the ocean, and they've got this tick number of people that have died, it was like eighty-five. And I don't know if you could, if we could do something like that, that would just say, you know, one-hundred-and-seventy-two broken legs in this spot, don't do it, I don't know.
There's, there's a lot of options there, but it's, you know, it's definitely a problem area that should be addressed as far as warning people of the dangers there. And I don't know if there's a billing.
Hold that, Sheriff, is it you? Who needs to?
I can, and I've already kind of broke ground on that, talking to the city council member to see what we could do, but if it's not there, is. What's that?
I think we'd be very supportive to expect him to raise a couple of bucks a head or whatever it costs to reimburse your department for that expense.
Okay, I can follow up on that.
Just go into that account to begin with.
Right, just have a, we just take, you know, a percentage every year for rescues up in there. But again, they have been very generous as far as trying to help us out with equipment, I do commend them for that. Ropes team, they've been very busy, of course, every one of these rescues requires the ropes team to respond and put their expertise to work. This weekend was no exception, they did a fantastic job, they, even with limited personnel, they were able to rig up a very safe rope system to make sure no one got hurt. Their expertise is priceless as well, as far as having that, that resource in our county, we should be proud of them. Animal shelter, I'll cover that real quick, it's running very well, Kerry does a fantastic job. And, but we are so, right now, we're getting some bids to replace the evaporative cooler out there. The water out there that runs into that shelter is the hardest water I think I've ever seen. The sediment that leaves behind in that evaporative cooler, it just destroyed it, just within a couple of years, destroyed that. And so, we're looking to get a new one put in, to keep the little doggies cool. And also, a water conditioning system that maybe will help mitigate that hard water issue.
You can get a big cooler installed for less than a thousand, can't you?
Yeah, the water conditioning system will add to that a little bit, but I think in the long run, it'll pay for itself, not having to replace coolers that often. It just, like in one season, you have to tear that cooler down a couple of times and just clean it out, or at least a couple of times, and the pumps clog up, the spiders, I mean, it, that hard, it's hard water out there, it's terrible. So, that, but the shelter's running fantastic. Other than that, we're just happy.
Glad to hear about your trucks.
Gosh, it's just frustrating as heck. But I'm glad it wasn't my fault. So, any questions? Thank you.
No, thank you. All right, that concludes our department reports. We're gonna take just a five or ten-minute break, is, seems to be what we usually take to make sure that we're ready and up to speed for our ten o'clock calendar, and we will be back at about ten after ten.
Great. Okay.
Reed. I don't think I can rotate it. You're welcome to plug them in. Yeah, either way, I'm happy to do it here. We can have it as part of that. But you can take over that. There's a little computer in the podium there. Whatever you prefer. But it occurs to me, it was opening it with the internet, but I think if I open it with...
Hey, John.
Yes, sir.
Before I forget, um, Debbie?
I'm gonna go ahead and make that.
Yeah, do you just need a, you need like a return email or just a...
That's good enough for me. I'll do it today.
Great.
I actually probably could have just done it, but I didn't want to do it unilaterally. It's really not my place.
I didn't realize that you needed, needed the ominous ominous. Until Debbie reminded me.
Yeah. Well, and there is some urgency, like she said.
Right. All right, we're back. The ten o'clock calendar. First item on the agenda today is public comments. Just remind everybody that these public comments are limited to a three-minute time limit per speaker. They should not repeat others' comments. Only the items not on the agenda should be spoken about. No items related to commission's role as an appeal board. Comments should be directed to the commission with no attacks on other people's character. So with that being said, let's open the podium for public comments.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Bruce Washburn. I live in Cedar City. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the Iron County Fair today. I think it was a great event this year, as it always is. My wife and I went over the Labor Day weekend on Saturday and enjoyed seeing all the booths and exhibits. And it looked like there were a lot more activities in some areas, like the petting zoo. And it was great seeing those perchera on horses from Young Living Farm or whatever it is. And I hope we also, my wife and I also participated in the parade on Labor Day with the Iron County Democrats. I'd like to offer a suggestion to the commission. Since most of the funding comes from booths and tickets, concession, sponsors, and only about a third of the funding comes from taxpayer dollars, that we should encourage the more rent for booths and that sort of thing. Because it seemed like there were fewer booths this year. Yeah, this year, the decision was made that political booths would not be allowed at the fair. This decision seemed to be the decision of one person. The Iron County Democrats had their check returned and one, and the explanation is that political groups don't man their booths. I can tell you, my wife and I have spent lots of hours manning the Democratic booth in past years. This year, my wife and I spent no money at the fair. In other years, we usually purchased meals, ice cream, and Paragona sodas. So there was more revenue lost from just us and anyone else who would have been manning the booth. The question is, what is behind that decision and how many other booths were deemed inappropriate? And if political booths aren't appropriate for the fair, why were political entries allowed in the Labor Day parade? My second point is to remind the commission that once again, use taxpayer funds to fund a political event. Labor Day is usually when campaigns get into full swing. Even though the Sunday night speaker did not make a political speech, the speaker is a candidate for Congress. He is invited to the, by, to the fair, at a fair-sponsored event, it becomes a political endorsement. The candidate also benefited from pre-publicity in the fair program, which was delivered to everyone's doorstep. Did the fair offer these opportunities to any other candidate? No, I don't think so. When will it become clear that taxpayer funds should not be used for political purposes? I don't know what the final cost of the Sunday night program will be, and we won't know for weeks or months. I do know that $2,000 for the event was included in the 2018 fair budget. I ask two things of you in the future. Please do not stifle political speech by disallowing candidates or political parties from purchasing a booth at the fair. And second, please stop using taxpayer dollars to fund political events.
Mr. Chairman, let me respond to that.
Yes, sir.
I am responsible for the fair as it is on. Mr. Washburn did call me, as did Chairman of the Democratic Party, Brittany Perry. I explained to Bruce then, and reiterate again, that we have people of all nature come for the Sunday night program. It could be cultural, historical, patriotic, but it was absolutely non-political. There was no taxpayer money funded for that event. And we will continue to have whoever seems to be of importance and of interest to the community to come and speak, regardless of political persuasion. I thought it was, I thought it was a good speech. I was very disappointed in the, in the sound system there. It was horrible. In fact, it wasn't even good enough to be horrible. It was terrible. But the decision on the booths came from the fair person who made that decision. And she applied it unilaterally across the board. She didn't play any favorites with Republicans or Whigs or Democrats or Russians or anybody else. She applied it equally, and I support that decision. If we want to impose some regulation on booths for attendance, for whatever, then I think that's okay too. But I don't think we had any... I don't think we had any shadows on the way the fair was conducted this year in terms of booths at booths and/or the evening speaker Sunday. And if people want to parade, that's what parades are all about. So, so anyway, I hope you can decide that maybe we were trying to be fair across the board. Because I told you before on the phone, Bruce, that if I thought you or anyone else were treated unfairly, I'd be the very first person to come to your defense. And I, I'm telling you that right now with a straight, straight face. I don't care what your persuasion is. I would defend your rights to free access to the fair or anything else.
I appreciate that.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a dead issue, and how we move forward next year is, is something for discussion, but...
Okay, then I think...
I think it was handled fairly.
I think we need to include political booths at the fair.
Well, and the fair board can determine that. But if they do, it'll be, it'll be an open all or a closed all.
Any comment? Are you...
Yeah.
We did have Congressman Jim Matheson about five years ago for the Sunday evening program. So we have done both major parties. And neither time was it politically motivated that, that... He was our congressman. Congressman Stewart is our congressman now, so we... And I don't know that we really worried about that with either one of them. We just, they're congressmen. They're a leader elected by the people, and so that's why we asked him to come. And I thought the both speeches were non-political and, and really good. But, but I, I found out about this after the fact, and I, I do have concern because I don't think we should be censuring anybody. And we definitely need to have a discussion about it before the fair next year. Because I don't really have a problem as long as either everybody's banned or everybody's given the opportunity. But I, I'm a little concerned about the banned side of it though, because I think we're a country of free speech. So, anyway.
But it was applied equally in this case.
It was applied equally.
Yes, it was.
There was no, there was no discrimination. But we, I think we definitely need to have further discussions regarding this before another year, so...
But just to get an ad in the, the Iron County today is quite expensive. And, you know, a candidate's picture delivered to everyone's doorstep as part of the program is worth a lot. So I think that needs to be considered too. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Joy, Cindy, then Joyce.
I just want to invite the commissioners and anyone else who cares. Terry Woods is retiring this week after twenty-seven or eight, I don't know exactly, years in our motor vehicle department. So we're having a little open house. Thank you for her tomorrow from four to 5:30.
Terry Wood?
Terry Wood, at the building, in the building department.
Four to five?
Four to 5:30.
At DMV?
At, in, in Chad's office across the street or across the hall, just so that, there's not that much room in the DMV. But she's retiring from the DMV, but the open house will be in the building department.
She been replaced yet?
Yes. You approved that two weeks ago. I can't remember her name. Sorry, that's terrible.
What time?
Thank you.
Four to 5:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just going to put this out there in Diane's defense. She was the one that made that choice not to have political booths there.
All the people who Diane is.
Diane Bixman, she's the one that's over the vendors. And she made that choice back in the spring. And she just said, "We are so blasted with political stuff. We turn on the television. We look at the newspaper." She says, "I just want it to be a fun event." And so she chose to, and we have limited space for, for vendors. And she just wanted it to be fun for the community. And so that was her choice, and I didn't stop her. I just, I didn't even think it was that big of a deal.
And we've said we support that action because that is her responsibility. And if we're gonna second guess everyone, that's a different story. But we expect people to do their job, but they're appointed to do.
And so I, we will, we will definitely take it into consideration because we didn't know that it would become, that it would become an issue. We told them that they...
But it was equal. It was flat. It was fair.
Yes, it was.
So we don't have any apologies.
Totally fair. And she does not like booths that they just put stuff down and then they're unmanned. She does not like that. And so anyway, it was, it was a choice that was made before anything ever came up.
It's okay. It's done. It's over. Dead and buried. We're moving on.
Okay. And we'll bring it up.
And we don't apologize.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item number two, discussion and approval to spend the 2018-2019 beer tax grant fund. Lieutenant Schlosser from the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning. As you may or may not know, the beer tax fund is applied for, starts July 1 and ends June 30. However, our funding for that doesn't come through until December. In 2018, which I have that report, we were awarded $57,611.35. And out of that, we were able to purchase several things. One of those things last year was... Biggest ones, make sure I have it right, the side-by-side purchase. It was purchased out of that was about sixteen, almost $17,000 that that covered. This year, we were awarded or given funds for that. They do not have the exact amount to date. In talking with them, those will, it'll be very close to what we had this year. We do have a difference in areas in which we... in areas in which we cover. Last year, we were able to cover Paragona. Part of that year was was granted into that. So we lost the funding that will go there. So long story short, in talking with the beer tax fund grant individual. She believes that our grant amount will be near fifty seven thousand dollars for the year. Twenty five percent of our funding has to be spent in confinement. So the jail portion of that has to be spent there, twenty five percent of that. So being conservative, using fifty six thousand, we would get fifteen thousand of that needs to go to the jail, leaving a remainder of forty one thousand dollars to be applied for the rest of the items that we were awarded through the grant. The grant in writing that grant this year, we put in for to help with what the commission has been very generous in helping us with. Part of that grant was to purchase eight hundred megahertz radios. We're about eleven ish short from what we currently have to make sure that everybody's outfitted with that. That is just a handheld section of that. And that comes to just under thirty one thousand dollars. And we're asking to be able to spend that now to get those coming. Knowing that the funds will be sent on or about December fifteenth to the twentieth is the date that she gave us.
So you received total approval, except you just don't know the exact amount.
That is correct.
I move that we approve the sheriff's office to spend the two thousand eighteen nineteen beer tax grant funds in the amount of approximately fifty six thousand total. Fifteen of that to go to the jail and the remainder to the sheriff's department. Is that correct?
Correct.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Perfect. I also have this sign off for last year's.
Remember, yesterday was my anniversary. All right, item number three is consideration and approval of memorandum of understanding with the Forest Service as a cooperating agency in the sage grass planning process. Turn the time to Mike Werthen.
This MOU is is tied to the EIS that the BLM and the Forest Service recently completed at the request of Secretary Zinke. He had he told him to go back and amend the the MOU or the EIS that was presented before his the Trump administration and and fixed some things that the states had complained about. So that was done. The Forest Service is now putting together teams to amend their forest plans in the state of Utah according to that EIS. And they're requesting or have asked that if the counties want to participate as a cooperating agency in development of those amendments. And that's what this is about. And I suggest that we do become a cooperating agency because it keeps us in the loop of what they're doing, where they're going, how they're how they're doing this, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd remove the approval of the MOU with Forest Service as a cooperating agency for the sage grouse planning process and compliment and thank Mr. Werthen for the huge amount of time and effort he's put into sage grouse and prairie dogs and wild horses and all the other stupid things we deal with.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Second from the top. And I'm actually going to give you but two more in front of you of the same thing.
Oh, great.
So if you can just take that one, then I'll have these for you. Okay. Why don't you take this one because it has this now.
Get it? Okay.
Yeah. Once you get that mine.
Oh, perfect.
So here's that.
Mine.
All right, item number four. Discuss impossible approval of the proposed amended plat of lots one and two, Block B, Skeevview Estates, Unit A. Amended location in the east half section thirty four T thirty five south. Range nine west Salt Lake Basin Meridian, Iron County, Utah. Reed Erickson will be speaking to this.
Morning Commissioners. This is a request to combine lots one and two. John has pulled it up there on the screen. It's down there on in the middle of the. You can see it's not the corner lot, but these next two right here. Lot one and two. And they, like many of these lots in Bryanhead by Bryanhead, this is right next to Bryanhead. Unit A of Skeevview Estates. We we I think at the last meeting or a month ago, we did one of these in the same subdivision where we're trying to erase that lot line. The lots are because of the topography, it just make it difficult to build on. And so they own two lots, and they just want to build over that lot line. And in order to do that, not have setbacks, then we have to amend the plat and combine those lots into a single lot. So lot one and two will go away, and we'll have a new lot one A. We've done the advertising and the notifications surrounding properties and everything that's required for this. And so staff recommend approval on this.
Things like a slam dunk, simple. I move that we approve the proposed amended plat of lots one and two, Block B, Skeevview Estates, Unit A amended located in the east one half section. East half section thirty four township thirty four south or sorry, the east one half of section thirty four township thirty five south range nine west Salt Lake Basin Meridian.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got that taken care of. Moving on to number five, a presentation of the Rocky Mountain Power Service Report for two thousand eighteen. Invite Mr. Tom Heaton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, how are you?
Thank you.
Awesome. It's a it's a pleasure for me to be here this morning. On occasion, I've had the opportunity to come and update the commission on Rocky Mountain Power and what's going on here in our area, in the county in particular. And I just put this together as I think it we don't do a great job of tooting our own horn on in many ways. And so I I thought it'd be helpful to put this together to show you some of the things we're doing in the community, in the county with regard to a lot of different types of support financially and otherwise. I think most of these numbers are from last year, but are representative, I think, of of what's going on. We have over twenty one thousand customers in Iron County. We've we pay approximately one point five million property tax every year. Cities in in Iron County have received over one point eight million in franchise tax back to the back to those municipalities. Sponsorships, this lists just a number, a few of the sponsorships and and organizations that we have sponsored and been a part of over the last year. The Fair, Lions Club, Rotary Club, Happy Factory, The Chamber. We're a presidential sponsor of the city CD area Chamber. And so on, and there's many more. In kind work, we like doing that and look forward. We did a little bit of that a few years ago at the at the fairgrounds through Commissioner Brinkerhoff's direction with some light poles. And we'd like to do more if the occasion arises for us to be able to support the county and and our municipalities in doing that. Rocky Mountain Power Foundation has contributed quite a bit of money and does every year. This is just from last year, fifty one thousand dollars. Two different organizations. I love it because a lot of it is for scholarships for both the university and Southwest Tech. For underprivileged students, first time students and their families, just a lot of amazing stories that you hear. How some of this these funds are are helping kids go to college, as well as the Shakespeare Festival and so on. Anyway, this just gives you a little idea of our involvement in the communities that we serve here in here in Iron County. And I think and I hope it's helpful in in showing you how much we are a part of the community, how much we want to be a part of the community. And the support that we hopefully are providing to to our customers and to the communities that we serve here in Iron County. So I don't know if you have any questions on that. Any questions on anything else, actually?
A million and a half in property tax.
Well, yeah, I knew you were going to bring that up.
Appreciable. But one point eight million back in franchise tax is equally or additionally impressive. But so is the fact you delivered five hundred and thirty million KW.
That's a lot, a lot of power.
That's a lot of D sized batteries, dude.
It is. I like and the Watt Smart program, we've done a lot of Watt Smart funding of projects in Cedar City. Most and particularly at the Aquatic Center. We funded a solar project, a couple of fire stations. We've funded projects. And you can see here that business customers have saved over five million kilowatt hours last year alone through some of these projects, both both those that we have funded through our Blue Scott, through our Watt Smart projects, but also the the customers have done through some of the incentives that we provide. Some of our larger industrial customers, we try and push to do lighting projects, to do upgrades to more efficient equipment. And the incentives that we provide are fairly are pretty significant. In fact, it says right here, total of three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of incentives were paid through the Watt Smart project just last year through. And most of that was through larger industrial customers like we have out West that are doing projects and new expansions and so on, so.
Well, we know the power company is very receptive. Anytime we need a bucket truck or ladder truck or some help. We found the power company very willing and able to come and participate in civic projects. We think Utah Power is a very civic organization. We know Brother Buffett is in business. When people complain about a hundred dollar a month light bill. You think, would I give up what I get for three bucks a day? That's a hell of a bargain, my friend.
It becomes more apparent when the power goes off, doesn't it? How much?
Very much.
How much we depend on it in every facet of our lives.
And the problem is your cell phone battery doesn't go off at the same time that the power goes off, does it?
No, I should turn it off, though.
But you don't.
No, I appreciate that very much. And I don't have any documentation on it, but I as far as rates go, we've done a tremendous job in maintaining our rates. We are always in the lowest third quartile of rates in this country as far as residential and industrial rates. We have not had a rate increase for four years. We our president CEO came out last year and said, we commit that we will not have another rate increase for another three years. Minimum, maybe five years. So our intent is to maintain a very competitive price point when it comes to the product we provide, even though our customers don't necessarily have a lot of choice. There is rooftop solar, there are options out there. But we think we can provide a safe, reliable product in our and service with our power through through what we do and maintaining very competitive rates as well.
Customers, we need to recognize that infrastructure and utility upgrades are extremely expensive. Just just EIS crap to get a transmission line through is is more more expensive than the cost of the of the line.
You you've seen that, yeah? That was the case with our cigarette to rebut transmission line.
Protect, be environmentally conscious. There's nothing to be stupid. And quite often we fall into that. So where are you on some compensation for solar when you have to provide the backup? Is that still a PSC thing or not?
Yeah, no, there was an agreement made last year with all concerned parties, stakeholders between Rocky Mountain Power and and all the all involved in that discussion, that net metering discussion. An agreement was made, but it's still it was only a temporary solution to with regard to how that was all going to play out. And I think it's all going to be revisited in another couple of years to hopefully find a final solution that will work for all parties, all concerned. Our intent is not to, you know, and not to get into political discussions or anything, but our intent never was to drive the solar rooftop solar business out of business. That absolutely is not and was not the intent, even though that was what we were accused of. But to find an equitable, fair solution for our existing customers that were in fact subsidizing and paying for rooftop solar installations up to that point. So there there is a compromise. There is an equitable solution. I think they've made steps toward that. They have made an agreement temporarily that will carry them, like I said, through, I think it's twenty twenty. But then I think there's going to be a more permanent solution made at that point.
People need to be willing to pay a little for the insurance of having backup power. It's not really any different than a demand charge.
Well, unless you're completely off the grid.
Okay.
Which very, very few people are. You're right, you still have to be hooked, you know, connected to the.
Hour bill and you're not paying a subsidy.
Right, you still have to be part of the grid, which obviously you've got to maintain the facilities of the grid and pay the fair share. And that's what it was all about, but that kind of got lost in in all the, you know, discussion. But I appreciate that. Any any other questions that you might have?
Just a comment also, we really appreciate the reliability. I I pay a little bit more than a hundred a month on my farms. But I I see every year the rates compared to other parts of the country, and you're always the lowest. And we appreciate you, what you're doing there. And the Watt Smart program, spoke of industrial, there's a lot of agriculture users also.
It's true.
Variable frequency drives that we're putting in have just made a world of difference for what we do day to day.
Efficiency.
A lot of energy.
Tons of it, that's right.
But even on your pumps, when you analyze that on the cost per day versus alf alf output of corn, you have to say, well, it's a bargain.
It's still.
We keep doing it.
Variable what? It's called a variable frequency drive. So if I want to have, I've got a two hundred horsepower pump with a VFD on it, like two of them. If I want to have on one wheel line or two pivots in a wheel line, I can do it. And you just you turn one off, and it automatically throttles down, and it's just amazing.
They these drives are extremely efficient. It's yeah, so so instead of powering up these big motors that go from nothing to, you know, full power. These drives enable the motor to 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 start up in a process that that doesn't have that dramatic demand on the system and therefore reduce the costs across the board, so.
And the VFDs are one of the larger things, and they also pay on just upgrades on your sprinklers to stop leaks and so on. But anyway, the cost of that. anyway, the cost of that VFD was almost, uh, paid almost fifty percent by Rocky Mountain Power, so it's a good, good program that helps everybody.
That's, I appreciate that, that's great to hear.
Thank you.
I, thank you, you guys are, you guys are easy on me, I appreciate it. Um, having said that and, uh, discussing all the great things that we, we think we do and provide for the community, I would therefore present to you maybe the next item.
Please.
You need to go ahead and announce.
Oh, go ahead, and the next item is just discussion of the county ordinance number sixty-six regarding the renewal of the franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Power.
Yeah, we're, this is actually, the old ordinance, uh, is fifty years old, was signed in nineteen sixty-nine, first of nineteen sixty-nine. It was a fifty-year ordinance, uh, uh, franchise agreement. Um, I like to kinda get out in front of these a little bit so that Mr. Edwards and his team can review. Uh, this, what I've given you is a template of, of the ordinance or the document we use in all of our municipal, in all of our communities, counties that we serve in our service territory with regard to our new franchise agreements. I think I put in there, this is, could be a twenty-year, uh, franchise, not a fifty's, just too long, in my opinion. But I, I, I submit it to you for consideration, uh, we have time, I'm not asking for any votes or anything today, this is to get the process started. Your legal department, your legal folks will wanna review it, um, if they have any questions, uh, I, I'll work through them, uh, work through those questions with them. Our legal department, I've found to be very supportive and flexible in, in, if there are any issues or concerns, uh, uh, to address. So I just wanna get this out there on the table so we can start working through it and have a sign before the end of the year. Um, let me just share with you, the, well, the reason obviously we have a franchise agreement in the first place is, uh, it provides us legal access to maintain our facilities like our substations, our transmission lines, our distribution lines, and so we can effectively serve all of our customers here in, here in the area with safe and, and reliable power. Some of the benefits of this, uh, franchise agreement to the county. Um, it clarifies really what happens and who pays for, uh, facilities when, say, the county does a road widening project, uh, or improves public access or public facilities. Um, basically, uh, it delineates and defines that if, um, you know, if it's a county right of way or easement, we've gotta move poles because you're doing a, a, a project for the betterment, safety and welfare of the, of the community, we pay for that. Delineates, um, that process. Um, it also indemnifies the county against any damages that may occur then from maybe some of, a, a facility or something that may occur to others, that maybe is a fire or something else that may occur. It does indemnify the county and, and, and totally take responsibility for any of those issues that may occur, so that the county isn't included in any legal action for anything like that. Um, it also delineates, um, our operating agreement as far as tree trimming goes, which you would think is kinda benign, but it really becomes an emotional issue for some people. Uh, as we have to maintain clearances and so on with trees to maintain reliability in our system, and it defines, um, our operating agreement and kind of shows that the county is not responsible in any way for anything that may need to be done with regard to that. So there's a, there's things in there that I think are important to look at with regard to the agreement as, as an operating agreement and, and a franchise agreement with the county. So, you may not have any questions because you haven't had a chance to look at it, but.
Tom, for the record.
Yeah.
Explain for the record that this is a non-exclusive franchise.
Yeah, this is.
Exclusive right, Iron County give you right to operate.
Our facilities.
As an exclusive.
That's correct, yeah, no, this, this gives us the oper- the, the ability, legal ability to access our facilities, operate our facilities to serve our customers, you're right, it's not, it's not.
Been able to issue other franchise agreements.
Sure. Which, which you have, I mean, we've, we've got a solar, uh, operating, solar, uh, uh, farms operating in the county, which in fact we buy all the, the power from and it comes into our system, but you're right, that is not, this is not an exclusive franchise.
First thing I noticed in the title, a general utility easement, can you define that? I, I'm sure that doesn't mean you can just put poles wherever you want, but, but what does that mean that we're granting you a, a general utility easement?
Well, we really have utility easements all over the county, and it's those general, and typically the, the easements for utilities are all together. The power, the sewer, I mean, the, you know, the.
Phone.
The, right, phone, uh, gas, that's a, that's a general utility easement. And, uh, those easements are already typically in place, um, but what it does, it provides us general access to those easements through this document, does that make any sense?
That makes good sense, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have it back in two weeks? When, when do you wanna bring it back?
Would you like to prepare it in two weeks, do you need to maybe?
Yeah, if you notice, this needs to be passed as an ordinance, it's not just an agreement, so we want it, and I think the county does too, passed as an ordinance. So, whatever works for the commission, and I'm happy to come back at that time as well.
I'll get, I'll deal with John and we'll decide what day we want to be on.
We'll, we'll let you know before we.
Nope, sounds good.
Forward, so.
Any, anything else, any other questions?
No, thank you.
We appreciate the county, you guys are just so fantastic to work with and, and we appreciate all your support, so.
You're sucking up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number seven, uh, talk about the, uh, discussion, possible approval of the thirty-five thousand dollars of tourism funds. Maria, do you? You have something?
So, we have been approached by, uh, Cedar City to assist them in replacing the roof on Festival Hall. As you know, the county owns, um, the Festival Hall portion of that complex. They have put that out for bid and the final bid came in, or the winning bid came in at sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, the only way that we could participate is if it was to come out of the restaurant tax. Um, that's really the only fund that has some money available, um, to pay, cause I, I guess they're proposing to pay for half of that, sixty-nine eight ninety-six. Um, we have not taken this before the Restaurant Tax Board. I've sent, um, an email to the chair to ask him to call a meeting so that it can be reviewed. Um, so I think more or less we just, uh, this was just bringing it to your attention, um, and we would have to do an, we would have to do some adjustments in our budget in order to accommodate this.
Um, comment, um, I read the, our agreement on Festival Hall over the last couple of days and, and it says that Cedar City does have all the maintenance, and we, we had, did give a little bit on that a few years ago, and we've been given about twelve thousand a year. Uh, out of general fund monies, I, I believe, I'm not sure exactly where we, we took those funds, but we've done some improvements and, um. So I have a little bit of a problem with it, but I guess if you're bored, if it's, if it's coming from the restaurant fund, tax fund, and your board approves it, then it's a little bit different, it's a lot different than taking it from the general fund. If it, if it was to come from the general fund, my proposal would be that we just pay it and then, and then don't give them the twelve thousand for the next three years. Um, because that's kind of the commitment that we have with them verbally, but the agreement's very clear that, uh, we, we pay for it, we paid for the building and still paying for it, and they, and they maintain it, so. I have, uh, bombs, but I don't, I don't like to see the, the stained tiles and, uh, I, you know, and I know it's a bit of a white elephant for Cedar, if that's the term, it's been a problem for them. But it's really not our baby as far as maintenance, that's my comment.
But it says, the contract says we'll pay a nominal fee, whatever, that's a stupid agreement.
Dale, what that says is we will pay a nominal fee for the use of it, not towards maintenance.
But that's a nebulous, I mean, it's a dumb contract.
Well, regardless of, regardless of how dumb it may be, the nominal, nominal fee is for Iron County to use the.
That's true, except.
Not for maintenance.
But we'd be very remiss to sit by and watch that continue to deteriorate with, with leaky roofs, cause we got a lot of.
Well.
And this isn't really a lot different than the fair, we do the same thing with the fair and with Fairwood City, so it is my motion to recommend approval of thirty-five thousand to come from the restaurant tax, subject to and contingent upon the concurrence of the Restaurant Tax Board.
Uh, I'm not gonna second that because of what Maria says, I think we need to take it to the board first and then come back, but anyway, got another person.
No, I, I, I think that, I think that before we take any action, uh, it needs to go before the TRT board and see what the recommendation is there.
The action we're taking is to say we concur with and contingent upon their action, their, their decision, so we need at least state our opinion or our opposition to the proposal. So the motion stands whether it dies or not.
Well, I'll, Commissioner Adams has indicated he, he doesn't want to second that motion, uh. I guess I'll, I'll second the motion on, my second would include that based on review of the TRT board and the decision that comes out of that entity. Uh, I think we as a commission need to respect that board and, and control of those funds.
My only correction is it's the Restaurant Tax Board.
Sorry, Restaurant.
Or TRCC board.
I get all the Rs and the Ts.
I know.
Mixed up, so the Restaurant Tax, TRCC board, so I would, I would second based on, uh, the outcome of the, the recommendation from the TRCC board meeting, which needs to still occur, needs to be called.
All right, may I clarify then? We've got a motion by Commissioner Brinkerhoff to use the thirty-five thousand contingent upon the board's decision, second by Commissioner Blake, but respecting the board's decision, is that?
Yeah, we said contingent upon, all we're saying is we support the action, their action, should they choose to do it.
Sorry, so part of your motion, uh, Commissioner Brinkerhoff, is that it is contingent on the Restaurant Tax.
The board's action.
That's how I understood it.
Is that correct?
Commissioner Brinkerhoff, so, so your motion did say that it's.
He says the commission.
It's contingent on the.
Supports the action of spending that amount of money contingent upon the Restaurant Board's ability to authorize it. We're simply saying we, we support their action, that's the intent of the motion.
Okay.
Okay, bid motion and seconded, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any idea when that board will convene?
Uh, most likely in the next two or three weeks.
Okay.
So, um, I'm trying to get hold of the chair right now, like I said, um.
Anything you can do to move it up would be great because of winter weather and roof projects, it's, yeah. Good time to be replacing roofs, you know that.
Let me see what we can do to move that up, and Commissioner Blake, you sit on that board, so.
Right.
Um, we can, we can encourage. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, Adrian and personnel issues. Oh, yes. Yes.
Just a couple of quick, uh, personnel-related agenda items here. Both relating to just the request for, uh, pay approvals. Um, first one is for, uh, Pierce Robertson in Corrections, um, who's been, uh, selected and designated, uh, to fill the interim, uh, corporal position uh, with the effective date of September ninth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, Mr. Pierce, or excuse me, Pierce will, uh, serve as interim corporal for the remainder of Jared Hanson's military deployment. Uh, you may remember in recent weeks, we've, uh, uh, transitioned, um, we had an, an approval of, uh, a full-time corporal position, which opened up this interim position again uh, with, uh, Mr. Robertson being selected as the, the best candidate for that at this point in time. And with that, it, uh, just per policy, uh, it would go with a five percent increase to, uh, Mr. Robertson's current wage to cer- just, just while he's serving in that position on an interim basis. Would revert back to his current wage, um, when that assignment's fulfilled or completed. And the next one, um, is Patrol Deputy Jonathan Betridge, uh, who, uh, recently completed, uh, you have copies of the K nine certifications, he's completed that program, uh, and obtained, uh, the necessary and required certifications that, uh, would allow for a two percent increase just per current policy. So those are the two requests that I have for you today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the approval of, for Pierce Robertson, Pierce Robertson from Deputy Two to Interim Corporal, effective date of nine nine of eighteen. And that rate will move from twenty-one twelve to twenty-two eighteen an hour, which rate will revert back at the end of his interim service, replacing the, fulfilling the remainder of time for Jared Hanson's military deployment. Number two, increase for Jonathan Betridge for completing his and obtaining his K nine certification per policy, this is a two percent increase effective September nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those have been approved, uh, and we're gonna strike item number B.
Okay.
From the calendar today. There are those. Oh. Okay, we'll move on to non-delegated items. Anything with prairie dogs?
Happily no.
Happily no. Uh, county boards. They're, uh, we're working a couple of different items on county boards, but nothing ready to come before the, the commission today. Anything with the courthouse?
Well, I wish Lester was here, as we talk about the sign and the landscape and contract bowls.
Cindy?
Yeah, we have that in our office, yeah.
So anyways, anyone, do we have a clear, a clue on the, the sign cost estimate from Rainbow without Lester here?
Didn't he say twenty?
And did we issue a contract on the?
We issued a contract to Jesse Smith, yeah, I told him to not worry about the trees and get on with it, so, I don't know when he's gonna begin, but.
I didn't look, see if we had the woodpecker holes fixed yet either, do we?
Yeah, no, they weren't.
Okay. Don't let's have Lester report next meeting on.
We, I don't know, I know Jesse's getting geared up, but he didn't, he didn't give me a date.
Specifically Commissioner Brinkerhoff on courthouse?
Let's have Lester back in two weeks to report on the lands.
Let's have Lester back in two weeks to report on the landscape and the sign estimate. He's supposed to have had a price, estimate price from for the sign.
Okay.
Oh, and by the way, we do have irrigation water in Perrin, so hallelujah.
Rejoicing.
Really? Clear into September. Supposed to be July. Anyway, we, we do have. And there was, some people are really concerned that, you know, there were going to be all kinds of plug lines and that. They were able to get it shut off and didn't, didn't suck all that stuff in there. So actually, it's working very well.
I've heard the pressure's better than it's been in years. Is that true?
Uh, it looks good. Looks good. They're like, we retained a lot of water in Yankee Meadows Reservoir because the city wasn't using their portion. And we had a lot of days that, when there was rain, that it was just too dirty to put in the system, so we'd run up and shut the reservoir off. So actually, they're turning out more than they usually do. Need to get it down because we're going to have a great winter this year, right?
That's what the farmer's almanac says.
I'm sorry, Dan.
Still quite full?
Uh, about a week ago, it was down only four feet. So, yeah.
For this time of year?
Yeah, very full for this time of year. So, yeah, so there's.
Are they still doing a big relief out of the Yankees still or?
Yeah, yeah, they are. Because farmers are still watering and, and everybody in town's, they're on the turns they've always been on and it seems like people, it's just working well. And hopefully, within about ten days, you'll start to see some green come through all that brown. Anyway, but, but the reason I bring that up is because Jesse's going to have water here when he gets the landscaping in. We can go ahead and do the whole thing with the grass areas and, and won't have to wait on that. Oh, he has, we have a plan, yeah.
Lester has the plan, yeah.
Yeah, he, his bid is based on the plan that we came up with, yeah. You've got it, John, don't you?
Actually, it's probably part of the packet. I could get that, yeah.
Uh, just a question. How is Yankee Meadows? How, how, how is the health of the reservoir?
Excellent. We were really lucky. The fish biologist from Division of Wildlife was doing worst-case scenario and said it was going to fill with sediment. Luckily, he was wrong. The fish were not even killed. When I went up there last year, when general public wasn't really allowed in there, but I was able to go in and I, I dipped my hand in the water and there was particles of ash, but the water was not murky. And anyway, so the fish survived and there's not a big sediment load that came in. So the health's good. And Paragon Reservoir did lose their fish, but they were able to get all that driftwood off in the fall that drifted in last year, which was kind of a panic situation, but the lowering of the water just took care of it because it driftwood went to the shore. And then we helped, I think it was us and the Forest Service cleared all that out of there and they burned it. My understa, it was all piled. I, I assume they burned it at first snowfall last year, so.
And we got it off the dam that was all rocky. We went up the day and.
In the town, yeah, not just the, yeah. So good cooperative project there and, and that reservoir's in, in good shape. Didn't fail unfortunately. Again, we hope we have a good winter to fill it, but I know everybody over there got at least three crops, from what I understand. And so, but the water, it, it is shut off at this point.
And Yankee Meadows is still, the, the road's still gated from the Forest Service, right?
It's not, no.
Or is it open?
It, the, they didn't take the gates out, but it's been open all summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't want, they don't want anybody camping in the burn area. The sign's still up. No camping. And for Paragon, I'm sure that it was restocked with fish. So you have, so the fish are back in there. Yeah. So luckily, we kind of dodged a bullet, but, but as far as sediment coming down, that's going to keep happening. But the, if you have time, go up here to the Forbay. The project there is just, it, it's amazing. It, it will withstand a major, major flood without damage. So it's, it's not a hundred percent complete, but very close. The old pond didn't have a spillway. Now they've got a large spillway and, and that wasn't what happened. It didn't flood. It was the outside that was gassed. But still, they've, and they've armored, if, if a, if a major flood came out of Main Canyon, they've got that all armored. So it would hit large riprap, go up over the top end of the pond, hit more large riprap going down. And then if the pond ran over, they've got a big spillway, so it'd just dump into the creek, which, which is completely armored for like five hundred feet. They've got large riprap and it's all grouted with concrete. So I won't say it's bulletproof because nothing is, but it's, it's really, really. And they're also armoring places here in town on the flood channel to protect homes and buildings and so on. And I, that's, they subbed that out. Can't remember the name of the company, but PCI subbed that out. And I, I think that's close to being finished. They're still gathering up that much big riprap is an expensive deal. Luckily, most of it's, we've had our source out there by the mine. So that's where most of it has come from.
The other thing I was thrilled with too is the fact that they put a drain in that pond to where they could keep the sediment out if they needed to. And I, I was tickled that they were able to get that drain in there.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. There was some good engineering done. So the, the sludge drain or the sediment drain, of course, is below the regular outlet. And so they'll be able to monitor that and open that often.
Slush it out.
Slush it out. Then that'll come into the irrigation system and we'll cuss them because it'll be dirty for a day. But anyway, that, no, that's a, that's a great engineering thing there.
That's been, that's been a cool project to watch because it's transformed over the summer.
Yeah.
Did a lot of hard work up there. Well, is there anything else that needs to come before the commission?
I need to report one little thing. I spent some time last week with Sheriff Gower and Jail Commander Joanna and Sheriff-elect Carpenter. We went out west and looked at four different possible sites for jail relocation. I called University about doing a, some feasibility studies for us, so we'll need to talk about that. Then in an upcoming meeting, they've agreed to do one. We need to agree on a price. I told them we didn't want geotechnical data, simply location, mileage, infrastructure, existing utilities, the things that that we need to compare the value of the property. I told them we would provide legal descriptions. And I asked them if they could have it done by Thanksgiving, so it'll give us a little time. Not as quickly as we need, wherever Dan is to talk about any budget money this year, but.
So what department of SUU would be doing that study? What, what department of SUU would be doing that study?
I can't remember. Name was Angela.
That's a good plan.
Angela something. And she was very, she was very excited. Oh, yes, that's exactly what we do. And I said, we're even willing to pay a little. So anyway, I said, get us a proposal. We'll need to narrow, narrow down what we expect you to do on your study. But all we want is a comparative indication of those four different properties for these three people to analyze and say that's something we ought to consider. I've asked the Joneses for a, a price and they've indicated they'd rather trade property. So I've, I've talked with Paul Briggs, who we hope is the new regional director, about a meeting next week that would talk about just county acquiring some BLM property and then trading that off for, if one of those sites happen to be the, the chosen site. There's a lot of difference in water, for example. Power's a little less of a problem. Sewer's a, is a problem. So we have some utility infrastructure problem that's, that's pretty large. And here's something that I'd like to get wrapped up and, and have those, that data available for everyone to consider as we move forward. Thinking about the ultimate time we have to relocate and build a new jail. Anything, Sheriff, for Joanna?
So I think everything else is, I'm good with everything else.
I'm good, thank you.
I don't have anything today, so we will adjourned. Thank you for your attendance, participation and all that.